City Council Meeting of January fourteenth, two thousand and thirteen. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the city clerk please take role?
Davis Reinhardt.
Here.
Joyce Jay. Joseph Demott.
Here.
George Pond.
Present.
Mike Stites. Tracy Langworthy. Kristy Davis. And just, um, Mr. Mayor, I forgot to mention that, um, Mr. Starker, uh, called and, um, excused himself from the meeting tonight. He's at home, very sick, and so we wish him well.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of December tenth, two thousand and twelve?
So moved.
Seconded.
You have a motion to approve, was seconded by Mr. Demott. Any changes to the minutes? Please poll the council.
Motion carries seven zero.
Uh, thank you. We have two proclamations tonight. Our first proclamation tonight is from the Wheat Ridge Rotary. They've sponsored many projects and programs in the city of Wheat Ridge, and they upfront, the city upfronts funds from the general fund, and then the Rotary sponsors those projects and programs, and then they reimburse the city over time. So tonight we have Mike Herman here from the Wheat Ridge Rotary. Let's ask Mike to please step forward. And also, I believe Joyce, do you want to accept the check, or do you want me to? I will? Okay. So Mike Herman, uh, from the Wheat Ridge Rotary.
First of all, I'd like to, uh, thank the mayor and council tonight for allowing us to come in here and present this check to you. The, uh, Wheat Ridge Rotary Club is, uh, of course, a service organization in, in our city. There's, uh, Rotary is international, um, I think over seventy different countries, but, um, back, uh, our Rotary partnership with the city started years ago when we worked with them with the Recreation Center, uh, donated funds to help build some of the meeting rooms over at the Recreation Center, and they're so kind to let us have our Rotary meeting there every Monday, uh, and have, have done for quite a while. We, uh, supported, the money we do, the money we collect is really through, all of it through fundraising. And we help not only local projects, but international projects worldwide, uh, from hurricane relief to, uh, polio, to vaccine of polio, or elimination of polio, eradication of polio, different things. So it's a pretty big project for thirty-two, thirty-three members in our club. Uh, we're, we're fortunate enough to have the mayor there, uh, once in a while to join our club and participate, and Police Chief Dan Brennan as well. So, we, uh, donated five annual installments of three thousand dollars to support Public Arts and off-leash dog park, uh, helped Joyce get the new dog park up and running, which I've been over there two or three times with my dogs. It's a wonderful place. So, uh, we donated thirty-one thousand dollars to the Rec Center for the community rooms. Um, we've, uh, and just locally here, just real quick, and I'll get off, off the station, I know you got a busy night. We do, uh, a four-year academic scholarship every year and a two-year vocational scholarship. We're soon bringing on another scholarship to support the local schools here with Wheat Ridge and Jefferson High School. We contributed fifteen thousand dollars to the construction of artificial turf field at Wheat Ridge High School. Uh, we partnered with other organizations, civic organizations, one of them Police Chief Dan Brennan started, which is the Wheat Ridge Feed the Future Project. Very happy to support ourselves, not only financially, but committing hours and time in that project as well to support the hunger projects in our city. Um, we give out a third, uh, dictionary, I should say, to every third grader in every school in Wheat Ridge, and a thesaurus to every fourth grader. We just got done with that project not too long ago. We supported Wheat Ridge Head Start Building by donating and helping build, financially build the medical equipment and onsite health screening. Um, fifteen hundred dollars donated in equipment to the Rec Center, senior resource, the center donations for capital improvement, holiday baskets, which we just got done doing twenty-four to local families in need who are, uh, not doing so well during the holidays. Uh, we participated in other civic organizations. Uh, they're about a Wheat Ridge Service Ambassadors for Youth, another project Dan Brennan's vitally important in, uh, helping, uh, youths, uh, when they're not really recognized for academic purposes. The Home and Garden Show, we're doing that. Few weeks after the Home and Garden Show, we take all the flowers and we deliver them to all the area nursing homes. Um, really brightens up their day, makes a big difference. Co-sponsor of the high school peer training program, Wheat Ridge Police, or with Wheat Ridge Police sponsor, the Joe Pick Coffee Shop, and then, um, we have a, a project, Ryla and Young Ryla, which sends youths, uh, juniors going to be seniors, go to the, teenage Ryla program, older private Ryla program, youth Ri, young Ryla, the seventh grade going to eighth grade, and it's a one-week-long camp, leadership camp that we support. So, uh, anyways, just want to say thank you for the city's support. Uh, we're happy to be part of this and part of a great city, part of a great council, great mayor, great people, great community. The community does a wonderful job for our Rotary Club. Uh, as you know, some of you might see us down at the Beer Garden. We serve down at the Carnation Festival. We raise, uh, the money for that, the golf tournament that we do every year, helps fund the projects like the Feed the Future Projects, uh, shelter boxes where there's been hurricanes in Haiti and down south in New Orleans, and so it's a, just great to be here. And I would like to present this check either to the mayor, Joyce, for three thousand dollars as a second payment for our, our four payments. So, thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. Thank you, council. Uh, thank you. Our next award tonight, or acknowledge, I'd like to ask city clerk, Janelle Shaver, to step forward and our new, um, not, not so new now, but our deputy city clerk, Bruce Rome, please step forward. Janelle wanted to say a few words, and then we're going to give Bruce an award tonight for completing his, training as deputy city clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I, I wanted to just explain what Bruce's, the achievement that he has, um, gotten now is that he is now a certified municipal clerk. And I wanted to explain a little bit what that means briefly. This CMC designation comes from the International Institute of Municipal Clerks. Um, it's an organization that's headquartered in California. Um, and it is truly an international organization. I see lists of participating clerks that are from Canada and the United Kingdom, South Africa, Mexico, Holland, all other kind of, uh, European countries. Um, to become a certified municipal clerk is no easy accomplish, accomplishment. Um, the IIMC has a very hefty set of requirements, and they are strictly monitored. You can't get away with anything. Um, they require to, to get this, as Bruce well knows, sixty points of education and fifty points of experience. This is what you might think of, like, if you're thinking about college, it's like a credit hour. Um, Bruce's college degree in businesses, in admin, in business administration is worth twenty points, uh, of education. His two years as deputy clerk has o, only counted for eight points. So that's twenty-eight points. The rest of all these points, these eighty-two other points that he got, had to be earned with IIMC-approved classes. Um, and they have an education committee. They evaluate everything. You have to document everything. You can't just say, "Oh, well, I went to this class," and, um, so eighty-two credit hours may not sound, you know, that enormous, but you have to realize that the IIMC people, they give one point for four hours in class. So, by my calculation, he has put in three hundred and thirty-eight hours of class time. So you compare that to most college educations, and it's quite a bit. So, um, Bruce, you have my, since I'm working on this too, you have my personal congratulations and appreciation for this accomplishment.
Now, and, uh, Mayor's going to do the honors here. So, I'm pleased to announce that Deputy City Clerk Bruce Rome has been awarded the International Institute of Municipal Clerks designation of Certified Municipal Clerk. The institution grants this certification only to those municipal clerks who complete demanding education requirements and who have a record of significant contributions to their local government. They're a community and state. Over the past two years, Bruce has worked very hard to earn this certification. In light of the speed and drastic nature of change in local government today, lifelong learning is not only desirable, it is necessary with growing demands and changing needs. The citizens that we serve need. We applaud and congratulate Bruce on this educational accomplishment and his pursuit of professional eccles, excellence, ecclesiastes. So this says, uh, congratulations to, uh, Bruce Rome, Certified Municipal Clerk. Congratulations. He will move on to citizens' right to speak on any item that's not on the agenda. Citizens' right to speak is reserved for members of the public who wish to speak on any item that's not on the agenda. Speakers are allowed three minutes. Others may donate their time to the speaker at the podium for a total of nine minutes. So if you're here to speak on some agenda item or, uh, not, a i, issue that's not on the agenda item, please step forward. Do we have anybody? Please spell your last name for the record and state your city or your address, please.
Mayor, could I add, uh, a request that if you're going to speak, please sign one of the papers, appropriate papers, at the table, and please write legibly so I can get your name correct in the, um, minutes. Thank you.
My name is Eileen Leslie, L-E-S-L-I-E, and I own Walker Transmission at fifty thirty Kipling Street.
Go ahead. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Um, again, I own, uh, recently purchased Walker Transmission and, uh, became a part of the business community in Wheat Ridge. Very excited about that. However, um, I've had some experiences that have not been very well received by us. Recently, I sent you all a letter informing you of a complaint I filed with the city regarding my experiences with the city tax division since becoming an owner. Briefly, the city tax division has admittedly provided us mistaken information in direct conflict with the municipal code, and has identified some of its actions as an oversight on the city's part. And this conduct has adversely affected my business. The city responded to my complaint, saying it concluded a thorough internal invest, or, excuse me, internal review, and it concluded the city tax division, um, complied with the code and protocol. I'm assuming that means policies and procedures. This is very concerning to me because the city tax division has already admitted to me that it made mistakes and had oversights relating to mine and Walker Transmission's interactions with the city prior to my ownership. I've asked for the city multiple times to meet with me to help me understand the city's interpretation of the city code, and it appeared, because it appears to be vastly different than mine, and not based on the plain language of the code. The city has refused to meet with me, stating that it would not discuss the conduct of the city because I was not the owner at the time of the audit, which happened about two years prior to my ownership. It doesn't appear that the city understands that the city's conduct does, by not adhering to its own code, significantly affected Walker Transmission's reputation and the going concern of my business. This not only affects me, it affects my business partner, Chris Condrey, my employees, our families, and our livelihood. In addition to being a business owner, I'm a certified public accountant. I'm a certified fraud examiner. I have an undergrad in accounting and a master's degree of taxation. The first fifteen years of my career was focused on taxes. That's, that's what I do, um, state and local, um, sales and use taxes. I've dealt with dozens of state and local taxing jurisdictions and have never encountered this kind of conduct, this misconduct. I respectfully reach out to you all now, because the city has denied my repeated request to meet with them. Based on my experiences, I believe the city needs an outside oversight to ensure the accountability of its conduct. I would appreciate the opportunity to present the city, to present my city complaint to you directly. I care about this community, and I'm very excited to be a business owner in this community. I care about the success of all citizens. Um, thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else for public comment on any item not on the agenda? Please step forward, and please spell your last name for the record.
Uh, my name is Jim Stevens. I live at thirty-four oh two Reed Street. Uh, council may remember me, and I want to thank everyone again for the award that you gave me, uh, in the fall for my art and the national award that I won for my art. Um, as you can imagine, I don't, uh, I don't get out very often. Nobody wants me driving a car. Um, but I do try to help others whenever I can, and in that regard, I am on the Board of Directors for the American Council of the Blind for Colorado. Um, the council is a five-oh-one, C-three nonprofit organization, um, dedicated to the independence and opportunity for all blind and visually impaired persons in Colorado. And currently, there are over three hundred thousand blind or visually impaired individuals in our state, and according to the U.S. Department of Health, one in three people over the age of sixty-five will experience serious vision problems, uh, upon reaching age sixty-five or older. Our council has a Sight for Seniors program that helps those individuals with in-home visits, need assessments, education, vision, mobility, community aids, and a lot of other forms of assistance. And with so many seniors with vision problems, it's even possible that many of us here may know someone who could use the kind of help that the, our council, the American Council of Blind and Visually Impaired provides. Right now, we're starting a fundraising campaign to support our Sight for Seniors program, and we're trying to find local businesses and restaurants who will allow us to put a collection container in their business location so that people could donate their change to our One Million Pennies campaign, which runs through the end of March. And I have to say that, uh, I've been out talking to the businesses in Wheat Ridge, and several have already, uh, agreed to help us out, and are, have the donation containers in their businesses now. Um, we hope to raise ten thousand dollars, and I wanted to inform the city council, uh, of what we're doing so that, uh, should you hear from a business asking who we are and, "Are we real?" We really are. And, uh, I just, as I said, uh, I just wanted to make sure that the council was aware of our campaign and what we were doing, and, uh, I have information about our campaign here. If we can hand these to the council members perhaps, to read at your convenience. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Julie Marshall, M-A-R-S-H-A-L-L. Julie, J-U-L-I-E. Um, I have been a citizen here for six years now, having moved here from the state of Texas on a Section Eight voucher. Um, I had no problem getting into a, a secure housing, a very reputable land owner, property owner. Um, and that was wonderful, when it was a three-bedroom. Since then, I have downsized. I have gone through an immense amount through Wheat Ridge City, um, through Judge Randall and through Jefferson County with Judge Green, uh, a lot over the last year with getting my feet wet in politics, and I have been looked upon by the federal government. I have no idea how I have managed to been spotlighted by the White House. However, I have been. I feel that that's something that needs to be taken into an account here. Um, since I've moved recently into the upper neighborhoods of Wheat Ridge at Thirty-eighth and Dover, I moved into a slum property. Um, the owner was not compliant with much of any code maintenance, no property maintenance. The agreements that I had moved into that property was that I would take care of that, and he would, he would do the same, and that was not held up. I had gone to the city for help when I found paint dumped on the property from years prior. Uh, they came in and inspected, cited him, increased investigation on it, and further cited him more. No follow-up investigation had been done to find out if he had properly cleaned up the property, property like he was supposed to. The building itself, the electrical wiring, there's mold in the walls. The furnace was so old and ancient, it should have blown up. I was terrified of living in that building, and I had come to the city multiple times. No one had followed up, and when one inspector had come out and he saw the electrical problems, he again cited the owner. They were supposed to come out, the person who came out to do the inspection didn't even have a proper work order. No proper maintenance has been enforced on these properties, whether they're rental properties or their own properties, and not properly maintained in a visual eyesore or visually ill-maintained properties. There's an immense amount of revenue that is being lost in all cities across the counties in this state. I have not found one, one-bedroom apartment available that qualifies under the federal mandated requirements for Section Eight housing. I'm sorry, but that is really, really sad. When I can move from Texas, California, Colorado, Pennsylvania, anywhere across the U.S., and this has been sadly the worst state that has fallen through the cracks when properly maintaining buildings on a federally mandated program. It is easier to get into subsidized housing where the buildings are not properly maintained, there's mold, there's water damage, there's all sorts of problems with electrical that's not being properly maintained. Why are we falling through the cracks? Why do we have such a homeless situation? Because they're not being held accountable for the lack of responsibility of their actions. I'm coming before you now as a former citizen, now a homeless citizen in the state of Colorado, to request that you please rectify these situations, hold land owners, property owners accountable for their lack of responsibilities. That's all I request. Hold them accountable so that we can actually have a proper place to live without getting sick. That's what I've got. And if anybody would like to see the evidence, I can literally pass it around, because how many people can say they've seen a Christmas card from the president? I feel greatly honored to be before you. Judge Randall has been a great boost in my pride and my self-esteem in my life, in my accomplishments in my life, and I would attest that to this city, to this place. Everything that you guys have been presenting in environmental standards, the improvement in your city, the improvement in all the pride aspects that you have here, it's wonderful. I want to see it progress. I want to see it increase. And, and I pray that you hear me, because we need it all across the state. No county is without cause in this.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. My name is Britta Fisher. I'm the Executive Director of Wheat Ridge Twenty Twenty and a resident of District One. I wanted to invite you and all the public to a potluck. Yes, a good old community potluck. On the last Wednesday of each month, January, February, and March, we are hosting a film and potluck series. Uh, this is put on by our Live Local Harvest Program, and this program's really about connecting with the local food movement and, uh, the food that we grow and the food that's local here in, in Wheat Ridge. Uh, we will be showing a film on each of those dates. I'll just go through that very quickly. January thirtieth- January thirtieth, it'll be What's on Your Plate; February twenty-seventh, Food Fight; March twenty-seventh, Urban Roots. And these three films will be introduced by local farmers, and then after the films, we will have a discussion. And this will all be held at the Active Adult Center, and the potluck will start at six-thirty and the film at seven. And we want to thank Councilmember Pond for helping to sponsor this and for the city's partnership in making the Active Adult Center available and partnering in how to get out the word about this potluck and film series. We think this will be a great time for thought-provoking conversation and to meet other people who are interested in local food, so we invite you all to attend, and you know, nothing can go wrong with a good old potluck. So, thanks to Bright Coast Pizza, Gonstead Family Chiropractic, and Wheat Ridge Twenty Twenty for all putting this on and together, so, thank you all.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else for public comment on any item not on the agenda? So seeing none, are there any changes to the agenda this evening? Move on to item one, which is the consent agenda, Mr. Demont.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On the consent agenda tonight, we have item one A, Resolution Number Zero One, Twenty Thirteen Designating the City Hall Lobby as the official public notice location and the Wheat Ridge Transcript as the official newspaper of general circulation for the city of Wheat Ridge, Colorado. Item one B, Motion to Encumber Funds for On-Call Storm Sewer Cleaning and On-Call Traffic Signal Repair Services in a Total Amount Not to Exceed Eighty-Five Thousand Dollars for Twenty Thirteen. Item one C, Resolution Oh Two, Twenty Thirteen, Amending the Fiscal Year Twenty Twelve General Fund Budget to Reflect the Approval of a Supplemental Budget Appropriation in the Amount of Three Thousand and Seven Dollars for Payment to Jefferson County Clerk and Recorder for Conduct of the November Sixth, Twenty Twelve General Election. Item one D, Motion to Award RFB Thirteen dash zero four dash Twenty Thirteen to JPK Micro Supply Incorporated in the Amount of Thirty-Six Thousand Three Hundred Dollars for the Scheduled Upgrade, Replacement, and Standardization of the City's Computer Network. Item one E, Motion to Approve the Support and Licensing Renewal with Logistics Systems Incorporated in the Amount of Eighty-Three Thousand Five Hundred and Fifty-Three Dollars for Computer-Aided Dispatch Records Management and Mobile Field Reporting Systems. Item one F, Motion to Approve Payment of the Sales Tax Increment for November of Fiscal Year Twenty Twelve from the Town Center Project in the Amount of Sixty-Eight Thousand Ninety Four Dollars Eighty-Cents to the Wheat Ridge Urban Renewal Authority. Item one G, Resolution Oh Four dash Twenty Thirteen, Approving an Intergovernmental Agreement Between the City of Wheat Ridge and the City of Lakewood Concerning Academy Training for Police Officer Recruits. Is motion in order?
Would anybody like to pull any items? Motion's in order.
I move to approve items one A, B, C, D, E, F, and G.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion to approve the consent agenda, a second by Mr. Reinhardt, discussion on the consent? Please poll the council.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is public hearings and ordinances on second reading. The order of testimony will be city staff, the applicant, and then the public, followed by council discussion and questions. Please keep all comments germane to the issue. This is a city council business meeting and not a pep rally, so please no cheering, clapping, impugning of motives, or booing. Please treat all speakers as you would like to be treated. Move on to item two, which is Council Bill Twenty-Six dash Two Thousand Twelve, I'm going to open the public hearing, and that's going to be Ms. Langworthy.
Thank you, Mayor. Council Bill Number Twenty Six, Twenty Six dash Twenty Twelve, An Ordnance Approving the Rezoning of Property Located at One Two Six Zero Zero West Forty-Second Avenue from Agricultural One to Mixed Use Neighborhood, Case Number WZ dash twelve dash O eight slash Rock. The applicant is requesting approval of a zone change from Agricultural One to Mixed Use Neighborhood for property located at One Two Six Zero Zero West Forty-Second Avenue. The proposed rezoning area includes one partial. The total size is approximately one point one acres. Currently, the subject property is vacant, and the purpose of the zone change request is to provide the owner with expanded options for development of the site. The zone change is a first step in the process for approval of future development on the site. If approved and prior to any construction, an administrative site plan review will be required to confirm that proposed development meets the standards of the Mixed Use Zone District.
With the city clerk, please assign an ordinance number.
This will be ordinance number fifteen thirty.
Please stand if you're here to speak tonight on the agenda, item number two. Please stand, I'll swear you in. Do you swear to tell the truth in this matter? Thank you. We'll move on to the staff presentation.
For the record, Meredith Record Wheat Ridge Community Development Department. Case number WZ twelve dash O eight is a request for approval of a zone change from Agriculture One to Mixed Use Neighborhood at Twelve Six Hundred West Forty-Second Avenue. The property is located within the city of Wheat Ridge, and all proper posting notification requirements have been met, therefore council does have jurisdiction to hear this case. I'd like to enter into the public record the contents of the case file, the zoning ordinance, comprehensive plan, and this digital presentation. Also, entering into the record, a copy of a legal protest that was submitted by the adjacent property owners to the west, and there are enough copies, I believe, for those to go to the staff table as well. We have taken a look at the paperwork and have concluded that it is a valid legal protest, which of course requires a three-fourths vote of council for approval. The subject property, you can see on the overhead, is outlined in bright blue. Forty-Second Avenue runs along the north side with Young Field and I Seventy further to the west. Forty-Second Avenue does deaden Xenon, creates an interior curve, and continues up to Forty-Fourth Avenue, which is off the screen. As Ms. Langworthy mentioned, the property is about one point one acres in size, and it is trapezoidal in shape and is currently vacant. This is a copy of the zoning map overlay. Again, the property is located encircled with bright blue, and the green color that includes the property stands for Agriculture One zoning, and you can see that further to the south is that same color, so again, that encompasses the Wheat Ridge Green Belt or Clear Creek and the Wheat Ridge Green Belt to the south. There is also A-one zoning to the west, and the two lots that are located there have single-family homes on them. The dark pink, which is over towards Young Field, shows Commercial One, and that is a multiple, let's see, multi-tenant commercial building. And then on the north side of Forty-Second Avenue, we've got a splash of N.C., closest to Young Field, and then as we move further east, R.C., those are both commercial categories. Further to the north, the dark green stands for Ag Two zoning. That first property located north of the orange color is a dog kennel with outside runs. And then over here on the, sort of, I guess, to the east of the subject property is the Prospect Park Recreation Maintenance Facility. The Office's use, which is to the north, which has got the R.C. zoning, we've got an office building on that eastern side, and then the Head Start School adjacent to that to the west. So, let's take a look at some slides of the area. This first slide is looking west on Forty-Second Avenue, approaching the property. You can see on the left-hand side the Head Start sign, and then further behind that, also on the left-hand side, is a Granger sign, that is one of the tenants of the office building. On the south side of the street, you can see a mailbox and an accessory structure that those belong to one of the homes that are on the south side of Forty-Second. So, we've gotten a little bit further east down the street. If you look carefully, you can see that the entrance to the Prospect Maintenance Facility, if you kept going straight on Forty-Second Avenue and not turn on Xenon, you would drive right into it. And then the subject property is on the right-hand side, and you can see that it's vacant. Most of the trees in the picture on that south side are part of the Wheat Ridge Green Belt area. And now, standing on Forty-Second Avenue looking west, now the subject property is on the left-hand side of the screen, and you can see that yellow posting sign, which of course is one of the requirements for notification to the property owners. One more shot, standing at Forty-Second and Xenon. Again, you can see across the street on the south side of Forty-Second, the public noticing sign indicated in yellow. And finally, one more, one more bird's eye shot, thanks to Google Maps. Again, you can see, this time, the upside of the screen is to the south. You can see the site, which is vacant on Forty-Second Avenue and some of the adjacent development, and then also the Clear Creek Green Belt Trail and Tabor Lake. So the application is for a zone change to Mixed Use Neighborhood. The current zoning on the property, which is A-one, permits really only single-family residential homes and some agricultural functions. Under the proposed Mixed Use Neighborhood, there's still the opportunity to develop the lot with not only single-family, but perhaps some multifamily, perhaps some live-work opportunities, and also some limited commercial uses. And I would point out that Mixed Use Neighborhood is our least intensive mixed-use zoning that we adopted of the four categories about two years ago. One of the differences between the MUN and the A-one zoning is that in the Mixed Use Neighborhood Zone District, there are very strict design standards which require high-quality architecture, which are not there in the Ag Zone Districts. Also, if a residential use is incorporated into development of the site, there's a height limitation of thirty-five feet, which is consistent with all of our residential zone districts. If there are not residential uses incorporated, then the citywide fifty-foot height maximum does apply. In addition, because the property is located next to a single-family and low-density residential, there are additional requirements built into the zoning to help protect and buffer those residential from potential impact of commercial uses. So there are some residential transitions, and the result is that as the building gets higher, the landscaping must get wider, and the building has to stair-step in adjacent to that residential development. So, let's see. One other note, if this zoning is approved, the next step for them would be a site plan review by staff and a very, very good thorough going over to make sure that they are consistent with all the zone district requirements. So, we did have a neighborhood meeting, of course, as part of our zone change process. It was held in March. We had eight folks in attendance from the neighborhood, and there were a variety of discussion items, including sort of the existing conditions out there, the process, and the proposed uses. We also sent the application out on referral to all the appropriate utility agencies. Because we really don't have a site plan yet to do an analysis on, there were some just very limited comments generally that they could serve and that they would be seeing the application again if the zone change goes through. Planning Commission action. The public hearing was held on October eighteenth of Twenty Twelve. Again, we had some folks from the neighborhood who attended and spoke in opposition to this request, and again, a lot of that testimony related to the existing businesses in the area, future businesses in the area, and some of those impacts from the adjacent uses such as lighting impacts on these homes and also traffic on Forty-Second and Xenon. Now, if you've had a chance to look at the Planning Commission staff report, which of course was included in your packet, you'll note that staff did give a recommendation of approval in the report. Now, Planning Commission obviously came up with some different conclusions than we did because they did give a recommendation of denial, and the reasons are listed on the screen. I would note that, you know, we are a support of Planning Commission, and that's why we brought forward the motion of denial as the first recommended motion. There's also a recommended motion for approval should council choose to go that way, and those are both in the council action form, the last page. So, that does conclude the staff comments. I will be available for questions.
Thank you. We'll move on to public comment. Please step forward to speak on item number two. Please spell your last name for the record, and please give us your address or your city.
And we do have the applicant in the audience, of course, so...
Oh, that's fine. We have the applicant. Please step forward, I'm sorry. We'll have to do the applicant first, then we'll have the public. It's been over a month since we've had a meeting, I'm sorry. So, please spell your last name for the record and state your city or address.
Yes, my name is Tom Martinez, M.A.R.T.I.N.Z. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council members. As I mentioned, my name is Tom Martinez, and I am a commercial real estate broker with Coldwell Banker Commercial here in the Denver metro area. I've been involved with commercial real estate here along the Front Range for over twenty years. I've been asked by Matthew and Trudy Rock to speak on their behalf tonight with regard to the requested zoning change. Matthew and Trudy Rock have been married for twenty-one years. They have three children. They have been in business in the city of Wheat Ridge since nineteen eighty-four, and in those twenty-nine years, their business, Rocks Roofing, has enjoyed an outstanding reputation for high-quality work and customer satisfaction. They are fine people who have worked very hard to achieve the success that they have been able to experience. One point of clarification, I think the property details concerning this zoning request need a little bit of additional information sent on to you. This property was originally two different parcels. They were purchased at different times. The original parcel was purchased by Matt and Trudy in nineteen ninety-eight from the Lee and Ba Ditch Company. The second parcel was purchased in two thousand and four from the Coors Company. The two properties were consolidated into the existing one point one acre parcel in two thousand and five. Originally, there was a ditch, the Lee and Ba ditch, that essentially split these two properties, and that ditch has since been relocated to the eastern and southern edges of the subject property. The purchases and consolidation were done with considerable difficulty and investment so that an economically viable property could be created, allowing a reasonable opportunity for return on Mr. and Mrs. Rock's effort and capital outlay. Concerning the surrounding zoning and land use, it is clearly obvious that the immediate area has transitioned toward commercial and even industrially oriented land use in the past ten to fifteen years. Other than the two homes directly to the west of the subject property on West Forty-Second, the uses include a Jefferson County Head Start facility, an office and industrial building housing several businesses, the Modern Log Homes office and show site, a multi-tenant commercial office building, and the Prospect Recreation and Park District facility, which though zoned A-one, is really a commercial and industrial use. So what that results in is somewhere in the neighborhood of eighty percent of the immediate land uses in the west Forty-Second block where the subject property is located are either commercial or industrial, and we feel strongly our zoning proposal to MUN is appropriate in light of that fact. At the Planning Commission public hearing, there were several comments or questions from either neighborhood attendees or commission members about the possibility of constructing a residence on the property, a single-family residence. We want to state unequivocally that this approach will simply not work. The die has been cast for our property for some time, in our opinion. Being essentially surrounded by commercial and industrial uses makes new single-family residential development a highly risky and inappropriate proposition at this site. The fact it is directly across to the north and the east... The fact that it is directly across to the north and the east from commercial-industrial uses makes new residential development extremely unwise. We also submit the city's decision to rezone the land directly across to the north of our parcel to a commercial use, and the resulting building that now exists has had a significant impact on the practical uses of our land, and that fact should be considered in your decision tonight. At the Planning Commission hearing, the city of Wheat Ridge Community Development Professional Planning Staff recommended approval of our zoning change request. They used the appropriate criteria the city utilizes for these decisions and concluded our proposal met the various criteria for approval. The recommendation stated, "Staff concludes the proposed zone change is consistent with the comprehensive plan and the I-70 corridor urban renewal plan. Staff concludes the zone change will be compatible with the surrounding area, allowing the site to serve as a neighborhood buffer." Staff further concludes the subject property has long been an underutilized parcel and that property development may be more likely under the mixed-use zoning, which allows for a wider range of uses. Because the zone change evaluation criteria support the zone change request, staff therefore provides a recommendation of approval. At the Planning Commission hearing, our zoning change request was denied, as you know. The Planning Commission stated that they did not feel our request met the zone change criteria. We feel the original staff report clearly indicates the criteria were met. The Planning Commission also stated that more commercial use further destroys the integrity of the neighborhood. As we have laid out the facts and as was also indicated in the original staff report, land use in the neighborhood has evolved over a long period of time. This fact speaks for itself. Lastly, the Planning Commission stated the proposed zone change does not seem to create a buffer, but rather encourages more commercial conversion. Our response is, the neighborhood has already trended toward and beyond argument toward commercial uses, and our parcel being the last undeveloped site should properly be allowed to reasonably zone change to MUN. We feel the decision by the Planning Commission was unfair, inappropriate, and not supported by the facts. We respectfully ask the City Council to reconsider the original community development staff report and the additional facts presented herewith in making your decision tonight. The Rocks are not responsible for past zoning decisions made by the city or the obvious changes to the land use in the neighborhood. They should be given a fair opportunity to develop the property in a manner consistent with the situation as it is and not be improperly denied that opportunity. The appropriate use is to rezone to MUN. And in conclusion, we respectfully ask the City Council to approve our proposed zone change from A1 to MUN. Thank you very much for this opportunity to speak to you on behalf of Mr. and Mrs. Rock.
Thank you. So, sorry about that. Now we'll move on to public comment. So please spell your last name for the record and give us your address or your city.
My name is Greg Boom, B-O-O-M, and I own the property forty-two-hundred Xenon, which is right next to the Wheat Ridge Greenbelt Parks Division there. And that's not a commercial property, that Parks Division. There's very little traffic there, there's very little usage. They just store vehicles and have light maintenance and stuff like that. So we're right there, we see them all the time, we work together, actually. It's not a commercial property, and it's zoned agricultural, anyway. So, I definitely oppose this. I don't want any more commercial in our neighborhood. It's frustrating. We've, I wasn't there when they fought the Granger building and all that stuff going in, and they lost that. So, it's just totally frustrating how it's all worked out. The problem is, is the roads won't handle the traffic and the usage. They've already got problems with another place that went in up the street, and it's not wide enough, there's not enough area for traffic and stuff for another commercial place on the street. They already have problems with parking and stuff with the Head Start and traffic issues with that. So this cannot support the traffic for more commercial. It doesn't really meet the requirements of the use for the residential, the mixed-use thing. What they did is, they told us that the mixed-use is designed as a buffer, where you go from maybe a transition from areas of housing into areas of mixed-use into areas of commercial. We don't have that here. We have agricultural, we have homes right next to it. This is not a transition area. This is an area that's designed for houses and families and homes. I mean, the house next door, they obviously submitted a, you know, thing that they did not want that there. The way I understand it, and I'm not an expert at this, mixed-use, they can do a variety of things. For example, they could put a hospital there, I think they can put apartments there, grocery stores. I mean, it's, there's a huge range of commercial-style buildings that they can put into our neighborhood, which we just don't want there. They say it wouldn't be good to put a single-family residence. Well, a single-family residence is what that whole neighborhood's designed against. And in Wheat Ridge right now, I think there's one percent that is open for rental or properties that can be rented out. So if they put a single-family home there, they could probably easily rent out the property. So, I mean, that is a viable option. They could make their money back, they could, you know, have an investment of a house in a nice area with a nice street and a nice view and next to a park. One of the main things that I think is really important here, the Planning Commission did not recommend this. They themselves turned this down, and we spoke there at that meeting, and they went through their criteria of what this meant and what this would mean to our neighborhood and how it would impact it, and they said that this should be denied. So I want you to make sure that's real important, that they already denied it and turned it down. And my question is, is would any of you guys like to live right next door to a hospital or grocery store or something that is commercial, that you're gonna have cars coming in and out? Or maybe a two-story or three-story building that's gonna be right next to you? So, those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Please step forward and if you want, go ahead and form a line along the wall there if you're gonna speak on this agenda item, please. Go ahead. If there's anybody else who'd like to speak, you can go ahead and line up so it helps move things along. Now, please spell your last name for the record.
Beckfield, B-E-C-K-F-E-L-D. And I was virtually born on the street. I went straight from the hospital as a baby to Xenon Street. I grew up on that street, it was a dirt road. We played on that street, we rode our horses on that street, we rode bikes up and down that street. And throughout the years, this became more and more commercial. The house, two houses south of me have little kids that try to play basketball now on that street, and I cringe every time they do. FedEx trucks, trash trucks, thirty, forty miles an hour down that street. Semis, thirty, forty miles down that street. It's scary. You had, you, last time we were here for one of these meetings, it was the Diesel Place, and it was told to us, it would not interfere with the neighborhood whatsoever. They park on both sides of the street. To where you wanna go down the street, it's now a one-way street, not a two-way street. They're rude and inconsiderate when you try to talk to them about the problems. The school up on Forty Second, if you go down that street, when they're opening or closing the school, there's traffic on one side of the street, and again, it's a one-way street. You put another business in this area on the corner of Forty Second and Xenon, is it gonna be another parking on one side of the street and making our street a one-way street? It's not big enough for this kind of traffic, it's not feasible. Like I said, I played on this street, and to see all these businesses go in is really sad. And I do not think that this street is big enough for another business or another one-way street fence.
I'm Catherine Murphy, M-U-R-P-H-Y, and that's Catherine, K-A-T-H-R-Y-N. And I am the adjacent property on the west side of this property. I would like to appeal to your common sense and your hearts. I understand it's business. I understand it will generate tax revenue for the city. But there comes a time when the people that live in the city should also be considered because they do. I worked in this city for thirteen years, I recently retired in April. I shop in the city of Wheat Ridge. I send people to the businesses in the city of Wheat Ridge. I am very supportive of this city. I wasn't born and raised here, but our property was family-owned property from my husband's great-grandmother. She bought it from Sam Hill, who was, if you don't know, the principal of, I think it was, East High School. I have watched, in the last twenty-three years, this area changed very quickly. And every time we believed that it might be a good thing for the neighborhood, it is turned into something that is exactly the opposite. The Diesel Place on the corner, I understand, we had no control over that. We were told that it would not have an adverse effect to our neighborhood. It does, it has an extreme adverse effect. The trucks are huge, and I understand-
Can I ask you to focus back on this rezoning? The truck stop really is, or the truck, Diesel Place really isn't the discussion tonight? So if you just wrap around back to this rezoning at this property location, I'd appreciate that.
Rezoning this to mixed-use neighborhood does not fit the criteria. One of the information in here is that it would not be objectionable to a nearby property by reason of some different things such as noise. It wouldn't generate an excessive amount of traffic. If you have a building that goes in there that can be mixed-use, their example was have an art studio in the bottom with the residents in the top. No artist is going to put their studio there, they want traffic. And if there's that much traffic to make their studio valuable, it is gonna be too much for our neighborhood. Our street does not handle traffic. We have traffic from the Head Start School four times a day. We have people parking on the streets, turning around in driveways, parking on our properties. If you have this much traffic going through there, it does have an adverse effect on our neighborhood. Not only with that, but you also have lighting requirements that the city requires. In here, in these requirements here, it says that you're required to, they're required to put up a buffer. I don't know how you do that. How do you put up a buffer? I have a six-foot fence between me and this property, and there is absolutely no way that would buffer lighting. They would be in my front door, my front window. Then, we live in a very uncertain economic time. Say this property goes mixed-use neighborhood, they build their building, they go out of business. What goes in there next? And I know we can't control that, but it is concern. And I am just asking you, that this is, the Planning Commission came down to the area, they walked the neighborhood, they didn't just listen to us. And they saw what this would do and what it would mean. I am asking you, please, do not approve this. Mr. Rock does not want to develop this property, he wants to sell it. And I don't blame him. If I had held on to a piece of property that long, I would want to sell it too, especially if I couldn't develop it for what I wanted it to. So I'm just asking you, please, I've lived there a long time, my husband's family has been there a long time, we've seen all of this, we're pleading with you, please do not approve this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, my name is Marnie Boom, B-O-O-M. We own forty-two-hundred Xenon. I'm talking for myself as well as for Levon Beckfield, who actually owns forty-two-ten Xenon. I've got a letter from her, she's in Arizona and unable to attend, so I'll start with mine. First, I did want to reiterate about the Prospect Parks area not being an industrial area. They do very little commercial-type stuff in there, they do some storage, but you have very few vehicles going in and out of there. None of them are large vehicles. They are very respectful of the neighborhood and they are very careful, and they keep a close touch with us, the neighbors, the people who have to live there, and they're very understanding and they're very good about understanding that this is a neighborhood, and they are zoned agricultural, they treat their property agricultural, they don't, there's no reason to buffer what they've got, what they've done commercially there. The Head Start being a commercial, that wasn't our choice. We had no opportunity to fight that. You can't fight Head Start. So there's something that was forced on us that is not our deal, that's not something we would have chosen to have there for a commercial property. The street width is not adequate. I know we all keep saying this, but unless you live there and you're trying to drive past, you don't realize with that Head Start, when they're there in the mornings and the evenings, it's not only a hazard for your, driving your car, it's hazard for those kids and those parents taking their kids in and out. It's very dangerous, it's a very narrow street. There's not room for another commercial property to be in there with more traffic. We also, you say that on A1, that it, that they should, you know, it significantly affected their property when the Granger and those guys went in for commercial. Well, it significantly affected our property too, as agricultural. And this affects our property more. We're trying to keep our neighborhood as a neighborhood. Mixed-use is great if you want it up on a busy street like Youngfield where there's not a lot of houses right there. But we have people, we have neighborhood people, we have two individual residences sitting there that you're now going to split with a commercial property. And whether, he says it's mixed-use, it's gonna be a commercial property and he's gonna sell it as such. So you're not really buffering anything, what you're doing is, you're splitting the neighborhood up even more. So therefore, you're not, you're not creating a good situation, you're dividing a neighborhood. And this is a neighborhood, a very good little neighborhood, has long-term residences. And more commercial use in this area is not a good idea. I'm gonna read Levon's note here really quick. She says, "I, Levon Beckfield, and am unable to attend this meeting but would like to be heard. I live and own the property at forty-two-ten Xenon and have since nineteen forty-six. I also own the property at forty-three-sixty-five Xenon. Since my folks moved into the street in the nineteen forty, and it was a gravel street, people living here remained here, longtime good neighbors and were all saddened when in nineteen sixty-nine we became the residents of the city of Wheat Ridge, because they lost one of their very long-term friendly neighbors to the fact that Wheat Ridge did not allow commercial properties. And there was a commercial, there was a gentleman who sharpened saw blades and worked on lawn mowers in his garage, and they said that that wasn't allowed. And so he was actually run out of the neighborhood, he had to move out of the neighborhood to keep his business going. It didn't bother the residents, the residents weren't upset about that, but Wheat Ridge said, 'No business in this area. This is a neighborhood.' So, we lost it, our good neighbor and friend. Another incident, my neighbor across the street lost her husband, and her daughter asked the neighbors if her mother could take in dogs in her garage for daycare. No one objected. They had a meeting with the city and they approved, asking for temporary approval. And if she moved, that the temporary approval would be gone, and she did move. When they contacted the city, the city had, the city officials could not find the notes of the meeting. And since then, three different kennels have been in that thing, and it's tripled in size. And that's where we have, it's zoned agricultural, and we have the kennel there with outdoor runs, which is not helpful to the neighborhood and is not conducive to a nice, quiet neighborhood. In just the past year, the meeting was held regarding the rezoning of the southwest corner. Nearly every resident living on Xenon Street and many of the Vivian Street people also came. We all voiced our opposition to the rezoning, but again, the city did not listen to the many owners of the property on Xenon. Now, fast-moving traffic, much, much more traffic, and our small, two-lane street is not- and our small, two-lane street is not able to handle it. Many trucks and vans, again, so much for our small neighborhood. Businesses do not elect city officials. People do. And people from our good neighborhoods like ours, people who live there. Now, we do not need any more businesses or apartments at the opposite end of our street. We already have our commercial on the ends that we're dealing with. We'd like the city of Wheat Ridge to care for our neighborhood. The planning board came out and agreed with our neighborhood people at their open hearing meeting. And they listened to all of us, and we appreciated that. They did vote no on the proposal to you. And she thanks you all for listening to us.
Thank you.
Donna McFord, four-three-eight-O Xenon Street. I'm at the opposite end. I ask that you keep it-
Could you just play her last name for the record?
M-E-F-F-O-R-D. And I ask that you keep it agricultural residential. I'm at the opposite end in dealing with the code enforcement people now from the place across the street with all the parking, turning around in our property, making, it's just a mess. But we have to deal with code enforcement now because it's, everything's gone through. So I ask that you really look carefully, because there is not sufficient parking. On our end of the street, we have two rows of giant trucks all the time to deal with. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anybody else to speak on item two before we move on to the council discussion? See, now we'll move on to council questions and discussion? Well, after council has their discussion, you can come back up. Some of that may get discussed and cleared up and into council questions. Council? Ms. Jay?
This is a difficult, this is a difficult decision. And yet, I have personally gone back and forth several times with it. When I look at the fact that we have many properties, many areas, where we are trying to improve business, to try to blend an area, it seems to me that we really don't need to add another one. As I look at this, and I've done some, a little bit of research. I also visited the area. I drove, I drove the street, and I noticed that the, I believe it's Murphy property on the west is very attractive and very well-kept. So this is a resident right next to this property that has some, some real pride, real pride in their price. And I, when I looked at what could be allowed in MUN, there was things that were not allowed, but there were other things that, I don't think that's a very good retail area. However, you know, bars, restaurants, stores, recreation facilities, animal daycare without outside runs, B&Bs, retail sales, twenty thousand square feet, veterinary clinics. Those are all possibilities in those MUN, in that MUN zone. Perfect for Thirty-Eighth Avenue, perfect for other areas where we're placing it. I don't see it as, you've got access to the green belt area, and it seems like it could be very attractive. And it seems to me that agriculture is not necessarily the best use for it either. If, when you figure in that residential allows a homework situation, twenty-five percent of the structure can be a homework situation. Perhaps get it out of that agricultural so that you could put a couple residential pieces in there. And so that's just my commentary on it. I guess I didn't answer any questions.
Any other questions or comments from council before I go back to the applicant? Mr. Demont?
I have one for Meredith. The distance, if this were to be a commercial property, the distance from the highway, I know the sign varies. You know, would they hit that hundred-foot or seventy-five-foot mark or something at that point? Were they beyond that? I can't remember what the-
Yeah, the mixed-use zoning has a little bit different signage than straight, other, other commercial uses. The Granger sign that's out there is in a straight zone district. And the way the rule works is if it's within, if the property is within a quarter-mile of the interstate, they can go to fifty feet. And by God, they're at fifty feet, the Granger sign. Sarah, I don't know if you want to address, I don't have the sign requirements in front of me. Or Ken? Right.
It's a monument sign.
Correct. It's only monument signs. I think it's a maximum height of seven feet.
Ms. Davis?
I have one more question since you're up there. Reviewing the planning commission minutes.
Yes.
One of their, their number-one bullet was the majority of the request does not meet the zone-change criteria. Were they more specific in that? I mean, in one respect, the city and, and, you know, it was consistent, basically, from the city's perspective, but then the zoning planning commission.
Right.
What were their issues there?
Hold on a second.
I didn't see it in the minutes. I looked. Maybe it's-
I mean, if you look at the criteria, which is not included in your council action form, it's in the planning commission, definitely there is some subjectiveness, depending on where you're coming from. Because the criteria talks about health, safety, and well, general welfare, no adverse impacts. Obviously, the property owners out there have a different difference of opinion. They already have the impact there. They've got the lights, not only from the commercial uses, but also from the freeway. I don't know how tall those are, but they definitely have, have an impact on, I guess, their, their living situations. Utilities don't seem to be a problem. The comprehensive plan is not a site-specific plan. And when we took a look at it, it's on the edge of residential, but it's as a transition area. So that's why I think staff commented about the transition between the Murphys, say, and some of those other commercial uses that are across the street. Obviously, planning commission didn't think that, that criteria met. Let's see, what else? It talks about a change of character in the area to such a degree that it is in the public interest to encourage redevelopment. This is an underutilized piece of property. Both the urban renewal plan and envision Wheat Ridge, the most recent comprehensive plan, talk about investment in property and trying to reutilize, or investment and trying to bring properties that are underutilized to more fruition. And again, it's a difference of opinion as to whether the commercial is more appropriate than a residential. Because if you look at, if you look at the zoning, it's a hodgepodge in there. You've got A1 on the south, you've got A2 to the north, you've got this orangish RC close to Youngfield. You've got some more intensive uses. I think this C1 is a lab. And so again, depending on where you're coming from, you know, it, you can agree or disagree all day long.
Thank you.
Don't know if that helped.
Yeah, it helps, thanks.
Mr. Pond?
Just one, one question. If, if this was approved and a, and that plan was coming forward, I assume that traffic study and parking study would be part of the administrative site plan review?
Yes, it would.
And furthermore, so then if, obviously, if some of the comments about, about parking, parking limitation, and/or about street capacity, traffic rates, et cetera, that would all be analyzed, engineered, and I assume taken into account in terms of the approval of the-
Yes, it would be.
Ms. Langworthy?
Meredith, can I ask one more question?
Sure.
On that traffic study, does it take into consideration, like, the height of, of use? Or does it just kind of take a-
Typically, it wouldn't address the structure itself. It looks at the square footage and what the proposed use, and uses certain nationwide manuals that talk about this use would generate, you know, this much traffic. It wouldn't address the height. If it was a commercial property, all commercial, it could go up to fifty feet.
No, well, I meant the traffic patterns.
Oh, yes.
So when it's, when it's doing its traffic pattern study, is it looking at the, the volume of traffic currently going through the street and what that, the new structure adds to that?
Yes, that is correct.
And does it look at it, at its peak volume?
Yes, both AM, both in the morning and in the evening.
Meredith, I could just maybe add to that in response to your question, Ms. Langworthy. I think not knowing what the use that would be proposed under the zoning would be, would impact how much traffic analysis we would ask for. They could apply for a single-family home or a couple of single-family homes, at which point, you know, we probably wouldn't request a full traffic report. We'd probably just ask for something like a trip generation rate. We'd ask for more information, the more intensive a use that they were proposing. So if they were proposing one of the commercial uses that's allowed in the MUN zoning, then we'd, we'd ask for more traffic analysis and that peak traffic analysis as well. So we kind of tailor those traffic reports to how impactful, kind of on its face, the development's going to be.
And then, I, I mean, this, I, I want to ask this question, but I don't want to, I don't want to, I mean, to me, it looks like along Forty-second, you do have more commercial, light industrial use. But on Xenon, when you go north, it becomes, you know, it's almost like two different zones. And yet, we're treating the street, you know, we're treating Xenon now as a commercial street, and it's really built to be a, a neighborhood street. There's no way to kind of, I mean, because of safety issues block off right there at the, because that, I mean, when you look at it, yes, that property fits within Forty-second, but then it, it adds impact.
Correct. It does.
And there's no way for us to kind of, because you have to be able to have firefighters be able to get around, correct?
Mr. Demont?
That sort of goes into my comment about that, too. At one point, you can study it like crazy with the traffic and everything, but at what point do you say, "We need to close the street off"? Or, you know, because, you know, with the neighbors, it just, it's a recurring thing with the traffic. And, you know, I hate to say, "We need to widen the street." You know, it seems like everybody says, you know, you don't want to widen the street. But every street between Xenon and Kipling is a dead-end street. And so I wouldn't see any concern with that. The fire department, the police, there's no concerns with getting through to those streets. That's a wide-open street from Youngfield. If you made that two dead-end streets, and not that I would say that, but, you know, the point is, it, it doesn't matter what, you know, what the traffic study ends up as. What we're looking at is if we're going to be able to say yes or no to a use through a traffic, in a traffic study, at what point would that dictate that we deny a use on that? You know, at one-point-one acres, and you get, let's say you're going to put twenty-six apartment units or townhomes or something on there, according to our code, you could, you know, just push that twenty-five, twenty-six limit. You know, at what point do you, do you say it's too much? I mean, you know, and it, would it just end up here again? Would it end up at planning commission again? Would it end up here again? Am I reaching way too far into the future here?
Probably.
Okay. I mean, that, that was my question. I mean, that's kind of my conclusion is, is there's just hundreds of, of, you know, if not thousands of uses that could come up on this property.
Ma'am, we're not going to be taking public comment again, so sorry. We'll have the applicant come up.
You know, and that's why I'm saying, I can't speculate on something. That's, that's why I got to ask. You got to, I mean, you can imagine worst-case scenario, best-case scenario. You know, but really, what, what we have to decide is a balanced scenario. And that's, that's where we have to get to. So, I mean, that, in my head, that's what I'm trying to wrap around.
Well, I, I think part of, if you look at the list of uses that are allowed in MUN, to Ms. Jay's point, it's not a retail area. You don't have the, you know, you wouldn't have somebody just happen, happenstance go down there and go, "Oh, look at this retail store. I'll stop in." It's probably going to be at some sort of destination, maybe a service, a nail place. We like the idea of live-work, and I think that's one of the things the applicant was in favor of as well.
Ma'am, we're going to have to, we, we, no, ma'am. We got to follow the procedure here that now it's council's turn to discuss this, because they have to make the decision. We've heard from the public. The applicant has paid the fees to be here to have his hearing heard in a quasi-judicial matter. So now we have to have council discuss this with staff, because they have to make the final decision. So do we have any more council discussion or comments before I move on to the applicant coming back up? Mr. Stites?
Meredith, would I be correct in the assumption, I guess it's all, you know, in interpretation or whatever, but if that got rezoned to mixed-use neighborhood, from what I'm gathering, it would really offer more protection for the neighborhood than to have it A1?
Protection in different ways, architecturally. It would certainly have more control than A1. Someone could have a whole, you know, they could use it agriculturally. This is one of the vestiges left from Jefferson County zoning when they had truck farms. And they could have, you know, twenty horses on this that weren't maintained. And to me, that seems like a big impact if I live next door to that. So we've got some safeguards built into the mixed-use zoning, just depending on which way the property would be developed. A lot of folks have said, "Oh, just build a house there." But I can understand by the time Mr. Rock, you know, puts a thirty-dollar water tap in, another sanitary sewer tap, it's, you know, is he really going to be able to make, you know, is it a good investment?
And then at A1, like Mr. Demont was talking about, chances are of getting a traffic study would be nil if something was to go in. Whereas if you had a mixed-use neighborhood, I think a traffic study would be more in order than at A1.
Depending, again, to Mr. Johnstone's point, depending on what that specific use would be.
What the use would be, yeah. But that would trigger that faster with mixed use.
Any other questions or comments from council before I go back to the applicant? Okay, please step forward to make your comments.
Just, just a couple of quick points. The issue about the park property, we don't question that the, that it's, the zoning is A1. Obviously, there must be a special use permit involved, because the actual use of that property is clearly commercial and industrial. It's got buildings, it's got trucks, it's got supplies, it's got all the other vestiges and things that our property, being an A1-zone property, would not be able to do. So it's clearly, it's a commercial-industrial use. And that, and that use definitely impacts the value and the potential uses of our property, because it's so close and it's actually one of the larger properties there. By point of reference, hospital or grocery stores would not be allowed in MUN zoning. The criteria, the zoning criteria that was used to evaluate our, our request was appropriate, and that's been clearly laid out in the, in the staff report that was presented. The major issue in, in terms of the point of there being existing homes versus our, the, the possibility of us building a single-family home on our property, the difference is that, of course, the, the homes that are there are existing and have existed for some time. And they existed around the change in the use of the, of the land use in the area. That's an entirely different decision in terms of investment. When you have a property that is undeveloped and decide you're going to put a home on that property, our opportunity to have any kind of a decent rate of return at all would be extremely minimal, and the, and the risk would be very, very high to, to build a home there. This is the last undeveloped tract, as you know, in that area. And the economics are obviously important to Matt and Trudy. The question about the access to the green belt from, from our property, there really isn't any, because the, the way that it, the reality is, is that our prop, at the end of our property is a twenty-foot, almost straight-down drop to that green belt. So there really isn't any access at this point that would be, that would be at all economically feasible. And, and the last thing is that this clearly has been an underutilized property. And, uh, and the last thing is that this clearly has been an underutilized property. The fact that Matt and Trudy were able to put together the parcels and make it into a usable pr- uh, property now is, uh, extremely significant, and I think hopefully can be taken into account as, in terms of what is the wisest use and the best use of that land. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from council before I close the public hearing? Staff, have any comments or questions?
Hi, Mr. Reinhardt? Just so, just so I'm clear, just so I'm clear, Mr. Dahl, as I understand with the appeal, it would require six of the seven sitting council people to pass.
That's right.
Okay, thank you.
I'm gonna close the public hearing, a motion's in order.
Thank you, um, I move to, I move to deny Council Bill Number 26-2012, an ordinance approving the rezoning of property located at 12600 West Forty Second Avenue from Agricultural One to mixed-use neighborhood for the following reasons. The majority of the request does not meet the zone change criteria. More commercial use further destroys the integrity of the neighborhood, and the proposed zone change does not seem to create a buffer, but rather encourages more commercial conversion.
Is there a second?
Second.
You have a motion for denial, was seconded by Ms. Jay, discussion on the motion to deny. Now, the denial motion, Mr. Dahl, just takes.
Just takes a simple majority.
Discussion on the denial? Please poll the council on the denial.
The motion to deny fails, four to three. Is that be correct, Mr. Dahl?
That's right.
Mr. Demont, would you like to make a motion?
Thank you. I move to approve Council Bill Number 26-2012, an ordinance approving the rezoning of property located at 12600 West Forty Second Avenue from Agricultural One to mixed-use neighborhood for the following reasons. I believe the proposed zone change is consistent with the goals and objective of the comprehensive plan. The proposed zone change is compatible with the surrounding area, and I'm basing that on the likelihood of what could possibly go there. The, the traffic is low, and I don't see any high-traffic businesses applicable at that area. And I will attempt to write that out.
Do you have the, there's the motion in the packet, option A?
No, I'm, I'm, I'm changing that just a touch. The proposed zone change will not adversely impact the public health, safety, or welfare. And the subject property is currently underutilized, and a zone change may increase the likelihood of the site developing and serving as a transitional site between existing commercial and residential uses.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion for approval, based on what's in the packet from option A, was seconded by Mr. Reinhardt. This motion to approve takes, uh, six votes of council. Discussion on the motion to approve? Please poll the council.
The motion fails, through, oh, we need, the motion fails three to four.
Right. Under, under the code in the charter, under the code in the charter, this motion would have required six votes.
Right.
So it has failed, and to the result of, or the net result of council's action is the application is denied. I understand and appreciate that the motion to deny also failed, uh, but let's remember that both the charter and the code are expressed in saying that in order to approve a rezoning where there has been a protest, a three-quarters vote of the entire council, whether or not a council member is present or not, is required to approve, and so the net effect is that the application has been denied.
Do you need a motion for findings?
Uh, I'd appreciate a motion for, to direct me to prepare findings supporting the council's decision to deny, which is the net result, as I say, of your, of your actions here. If someone would make that motion, and a- as you know, what I do when I create. I would like to move that the, um, that we direct the city attorney to, um, create a document of findings that relates into this hearing. All right, that would be brought back, uh, for your consideration? That would be brought back for our consideration. At the next meeting? At the next hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion to direct the city attorney to, uh, produce findings for the denial of, of item number two, seconded by Ms. Langworthy. Please poll the council on the motion.
Sorry, okay. I didn't clear that fast enough for you, I'm sorry. Uh, motion carries seven-zero.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, just to, so, for the members of the audience, when this comes back in two weeks, it will not be a public hearing. We won't just, I know the council knows this, but I want the audience to know that, that the council will be voting on those, those findings, to approve the findings, but that doesn't change the fact that they've made a denial tonight. There will not be a public hearing, more testimony in two weeks.
Okay, it's, um, eight-thirty, let's take a five-minute break.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead and reconvene. We'll move on to item number three, which is... Sorry. We'll move on to item number three, which is Council Bill twenty-seven dash two thousand twelve. I'm gonna open the public hearing, and that's gonna be Mr. Reinhardt, because Bud's not here.
Oh, wow. I'm not prepared. Hang on. I just said, I didn't even know.
Okay, well, we'll go on to Ms. Davis. Do you mind, Davis?
No, go ahead.
Because it's a District One.
Oh, well, I would be happy if she would.
Ms. Davis, go ahead.
That's covered.
Davis, 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 Dave.
Yeah, Davis, you know, it's all in the family. Council Bill number twenty-seven dash twenty-twelve, an ordinance approving the rezoning of property located at thirty-seven seventy-five Benton Street from planned residential development, PRD, to the mixed-use neighborhood, MUN Zone District, case number WZ twelve dash oh-nine. Okay, issue: The city's adopted plans including envision Wheat Ridge and Thirty-Eighth Avenue corridor plan. Call for the redevelopment of Thirty-Eighth Avenue with mixed-use pedestrian-friendly development. The applicant requests approval of a zone change from planned residential development to mixed-use neighborhood for property located at thirty-seven seventy-five Benton Street. The zone change is the first step for approval of development of this site with mixed-use zoning. If approved, the applicant will be required to complete the site plan review process to demonstrate compliance with zoning requirements prior to any construction.
Thank you. Would the city clerk please assign an ordinance number?
This now will be ordinance number fifteen thirty, because the previous one failed, so this number carries over.
If you're here tonight to speak on item three, please stand and raise your right hand, and I'll swear you in. Do you swear or tell the truth in this matter? Thank you. We want a staff presentation.
Good evening. Can you guys hear me?
No, I think you might need a battery, or is it turned off?
It is on.
I think you might need a battery.
Testing. That works?
Yeah.
Okay. Good evening. I'm Sarah Shaw Walter with the Community Development Department. This is case WZ twelve oh-nine, a request for rezoning to mixed-use neighborhood at thirty-seven seventy-five Benton Street. I'd like to enter into the record the contents of this presentation, the case file, the zoning ordinance, and the comprehensive plan. I'd also like to note this property is in the city of Wheat Ridge, and all posting requirements have been met, so council has jurisdiction to hear this case. The property that's in question is a small vacant lot. It is outlined in blue here. It is on Benton Street, just a little bit south of Thirty-Eighth Avenue. This is Thirty-Eighth Avenue, and this is Benton here. And like I said, the property in question is this vacant piece here. This is a zoning map of the area. The kind of dark blue C here is the recently adopted mixed-use neighborhood zoning on the Thirty-Eighth Avenue corridor. This was a legislative rezoning approved by council in the fall of two thousand twelve. And as you can see, the majority of the properties to the north of the property in question, which is right here, have the new MUN zoning. There are a couple of properties that have commercial one or C-one zoning to the north. And then to the south is a mix of residential zone districts. There really is a mix here. You have immediately to the south R-three or residential three, which allows for multifamily. And then you also have some R-one zone districts, which allow for single-family homes, R-one B and R-one A, R-one C as well, and a little bit of R-two here. So quite a mix of zoning in the area. It really is kind of a transitional area, as you have a commercial corridor here transitioning into more of a residential neighborhood to the south. Just a few quick photos of the site. This is on Benton Street looking north. The property directly north of the site is zone mixed-use neighborhood, and it has an auto parts store on it, a commercial use, which is what you can kind of see in the distance there. The site itself is in between this fence that's part of the residential property and the trees here. These trees are on the commercial property. So it's kind of the vacant grassy piece here. This is a little bit closer to the site, looking a little more to the west, but again, you can see the commercial property that's to the north. And then finally, this is kind of looking back to the south now, so you can get a good view of the residential property. There's a duplex here directly south of the site behind this fence. The current zoning on the site is planned residential development, or PRD. That zoning was put in place in two thousand and seven when city council approved a rezoning from C-one to PRD. The PRD only allows for a single-family home. That's the only use allowed. It has a maximum height of thirty-five feet, and it does set setbacks for the southern, which borders the residential property to the south, the required setback five feet. The proposed zoning tonight that the applicant has requested is mixed-use neighborhood. This is a zone district that allows for a variety of residential land use types, from single-family to multifamily, limited commercial uses, or a mix of residential and commercial. It does have pretty strict architectural and site design requirements to really encourage quality site and architecture, which we think, staff thinks, is one of the reasons why this zoning is appropriate for this site. In terms of height, the, any residential use would have a thirty-five-foot maximum, so that would match what the current zoning is with the PRD. If a commercial building were on the site, it could theoretically go up to fifty feet, although I'll have a slide in a minute showing that that's not really possible on this site. And then, as is required of any development in a mixed-use zone district, prior to development, you have to go through an administrative site plan review to document that every requirement in the zoning is being met. So just a quick analysis. Theoretically, the zoning would allow for commercial use on this property. The applicant has expressed a desire to do either strictly residential or perhaps a live-work scenario, but certainly a residential component. And from a staff standpoint, we did analysis where we feel pretty comfortable that it's nearly impossible to get a economically viable commercial use on this property. It's very small. The site is about zero-point-one-five acres, or sixty-five hundred square feet. It's fifty feet in width, and then you can see, because of the angle on Benton, the length varies a little bit, with about a hundred-and-thirty-five feet on the north and a hundred-and-twenty-five on the south. So we did a couple of quick massing diagrams just to test, you know, okay, well theoretically, if somebody did try and fit a commercial building on this property, you know, would it be feasible? What might it look like? The, even though the zoning would allow for a four-story building, typical office floor-to-floor heights are fourteen feet. We did thirteen feet here, just to be conservative. And even with that, which would be quite shallow, you hit the fifty-foot maximum height limit, so that would not be allowed on this site, not to mention the fact that it's a very narrow footprint by the time you have the required twenty-foot setback from the residential property to the south. And would, it's, their, commercial buildings just aren't built that, at such a narrow depth. A three-story commercial would meet the height limits at a fourteen-foot floor-to-floor. But again, we run into this issue of a really narrow footprint for the building. At a three-story height, you'd be required to have a fifteen-foot landscaped setback here, which only needs thirty feet, really narrow for a commercial building, not to mention the fact that there's no access onto this site right now. So there's no room here to fit in parking, a drive aisle to get to the parking, or stormwater detention and water quality, which would be required as part of development of the site. So even a one-story building with approximately this footprint, you still aren't able to fit the required parking and stormwater detention that's needed without putting the stormwater underground, which is very expensive and probably not economically feasible if you're only doing a small commercial development like this. So based on that analysis, you think what's much more reasonable, and certainly, as I already said, what the applicant has expressed an interest in is doing residential on the site, potentially a two, maybe you could fit three units. So you could potentially go up to three stories, you know, somewhere around that thirty-three to the thirty-five-foot maximum height. You would be required with a three-story building to have a fifteen-foot landscaped setback here between the property to the south, which is greater than the current PRD zoning requires. That only asks for a five-foot setback. The narrower building footprint is much more appropriate for residential buildings, so that is feasible. But again, one of the things you have to think about is there would be a requirement for at least one parking space per unit on-site. So possibly, there could be access to garages, for example, underneath the second story of a unit in this portion of the lot, but there would still have to be a minimum six-foot landscape buffer here. In terms of the process that we've gone through so far, there was a neighborhood meeting held in September. There were nine people from the neighborhood in attendance. There was a lot of discussion about what uses are permitted under the mixed-use zoning, as well as, you know, what uses the applicant was hoping to do, and then talking about required setbacks in landscaping under the proposed zoning. In terms of referral to outside agencies and utility districts, there were no concerns, and they will have the ability to serve the property. Just very quickly, one of the reasons why staff is recommending approval of this case is because we think the zoning fits with the vision and our adopted plans. Essentially, this property would have been part of the legislative rezoning that city council approved a couple of months ago. It, all of the criteria except for one, which is that it zoned PRD, and we specifically included, excluded PRD zoning from the city-wide, or from the city-initiated rezoning on Thirty-Eighth Avenue. That's the only reason that it wasn't included to begin with. We did not know at that time the applicant was interested in being rezoned, or we could have included it in the legislative rezoning. So we really do think that it meets the intent for what we're trying to do on Thirty-Eighth Avenue. It's a Main Street corridor, a priority redevelopment area in our comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan specifically recommends small-scale mixed-use infill along the corridor, which is what the applicant is proposing to do, and it's pretty close to Community Commercial Center at Sheridan and Thirty-Eighth. And then, of course, our sub-area plan, or the corridor plan for Thirty-Eighth Avenue, the sites within the Sheridan and Commercial sub-district, but the sub-district is called out as a mixed-use area. So the residential vision definitely fits there, too. Overall, the plan is just very encouraging of infill, high-quality residential development, which is what we think the zoning would promote here. So in conclusion, we've kind of spelled out why we think that the request meets the rezoning criteria. We think it will help with the development of an underutilized and vacant site, and I will be here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Would the applicant like to say a few words? If you do, please spell your last name for the record and state your city or your address.
Hi, my name is Sen Pommata, P-H-L-M-M-A-T-H-A. I live in Westminster, Colorado. Do you want my exact address?
No, city or address is fine.
Okay. The reason why, pretty much I want to live near my grandfather. He lives in the city of Wheat Ridge, Mike Phelps. I didn't know much about Wheat Ridge until I just felt, you know, just came to visit him one day, and I just drove around. I realized there's a lot of potential in the city of Wheat Ridge, and I met with Britta, with City of Wheat Ridge twenty-twenty Division, and I believe we could build something together and help Wheat Ridge move forward in the next few decades. I did my research. I'm a marketing profession, and in my research, I realized that City of Wheat Ridge is falling behind in many, many aspects of the nearby neighbors, and I see a lot of potential in it to build businesses, younger generations to move back to this city. It's great that a lot of people want to stay here. We've seen some residents earlier where they were born here and stayed here, and it's great, but younger generations are not coming in, so I want to pull them over to the corridor where, the Thirty-Eighth corridor, so pull the West Highlands, the Highlands kids over to, pretty much staying with Wheat Ridge to help develop the area as well.
Thank you. So move on to council discussion and questions.
Mr. Mayor, you should...
Mr. Drock?
It's a public hearing, so you should at least ask if there's members of the public here. I think that was it for testimony, but...
Oh, I know, but, okay, did we have anybody here from the public who'd like to speak on item number three? I didn't have any signed up, so I didn't...
Thanks.
Item three, public? Thank you. Now we'll go on to council discussion. Mr. Demott?
It is the property owner that's asking for the rezoning on this one? Okay.
Any other questions or comments?
It's purely academic, but I don't understand why the writing under the side said back to the south and why it became ten, fifteen, and twenty as opposed to... I'm somewhat confused by the way that's written, and it doesn't remind, look to me the same as I recall the code. So how does the side said back south in our, which says, "Based on building height"? Where does that come from?
In the mixed-use zone district, if you're adjacent to a low-density residential property...
What kind of residential?
Low-density, a single or two-family home.
Single or two-family is the boundary where you use that buffer?
Right, so if you're adjacent to that, then you have to increase by five feet each time you add a story.
Got it. That was the part I didn't remember. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments before I close the public hearing? Staff, do you have any other questions or comments? I'm gonna close the public hearing, and a motion's in order.
I've moved to approve Council Bill number twenty-seven dash twenty-twelve, an ordinance approving the rezoning of property located at thirty-seven seventy-five Benton Street from planned residential to mixed-use neighborhood zone district on second reading, and it take effect fifteen days after publication.
Second.
We have a motion to approve item number three, was seconded by Mr. Reinhardt. Discussion on the main motion? Please poll the council.
Motion carries seven-zero.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to, ordinance is on first reading. Item four is Council Bill number oh-one dash two thousand thirteen, Ms. Jay.
Council Bill number two thousand, now you got me doing it, oh-one, two thousand thirteen, an ordinance approving the rezoning of property located at forty-three thirty-five Harland Street from restricted commercial, RC, to mixed-use neighborhood, MUN, case number WZ twelve dash ten Fernandez. At issue, the applicant is requesting approval of a zone change from restricted commercial, RC, to mixed-use neighborhood, MUN, for property located at forty-three thirty-five Harland Street. The proposed rezoning includes one parcel, the total size of which is approximately point-twenty-nine acres. The purpose of the zone change is to expand possible use for the property, including the option of converting the existing structure back to residential occupancy. At this time, the applicant is not proposing any new development or modifications to the site. If the property is redeveloped in the future under the proposed MUN zoning, an administrative site plan review would be required to confirm that proposed development meets the standard of the mixed-use zone district.
Motion's in order.
I didn't move it yet.
Motion's in order.
I move to approve Council Bill number oh-one dash two thousand thirteen, an ordinance approving the rezoning of property located at forty-three thirty-five Harland Street from residential, commercial, RC, to mixed-use neighborhood.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion to approve item number four, was seconded by Mr. Reinhardt. Please poll the council.
Motion carries seven-zero.
Thank you. Item five is Council Bill number oh-two dash two thousand thirteen. Mr. Reinhardt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce Council Bill number oh-two dash two thousand and thirteen, an ordinance amending section sixteen-one thirty-one and sixteen-one thirty-three of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning possession of marijuana and drug paraphernalia. Section sixteen-one thirty-one and sixteen-one thirty-three of the Wheat Ridge Code of Law prohibit certain activities concerning the possession and use of marijuana-associated drug paraphernalia. On November sixth, two thousand and twelve, the citizens of the state of Colorado voted in favor of amendment sixty-four legalizing the recreational use of marijuana and associated drug paraphernalia for persons twenty-one years of age and older. Accordingly, it is now legal for persons of age twenty-one and age or older to possess, display, and privately use one ounce or less of marijuana, and to possess up to six marijuana plants with three or fewer being mature flowering plants. In accordance with the effective date of December sixth, two thousand and twelve, law enforcement stopped issuing citations to persons twenty-one years of age or older from marijuana-related activities that were legalized by the provisions of amendment sixty-four. Currently, the provisions of section sixteen-one thirty-one and sixteen-one thirty-three of the Code are in conflict with the provisions of amendment sixty-four. The attached ordinance amends those provisions so they're consistent with state law. Is a motion in order?
Motion's in order.
I move to approve Council Bill number oh-two two thousand and thirteen, an ordinance amending section sixteen-one thirty-one and sixteen-one thirty-three of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws on first reading. Order it published. Public hearing set for Monday, January twenty-eighth, two thousand and thirteen, at seven PM in city council chambers, and it take effect upon adoption and signature the mayor has provided by section five point one-one of the Charter.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion to approve item number five, was seconded by Mr. Demott. Please poll the council.
Motion carries seven-zero.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is decisions, resolutions, and motions. Item six is resolution oh-three dash two thousand and thirteen. Mr. Stites?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce resolution number oh-three two thousand and thirteen, a resolution approving a smoke-free policy in all parks, playgrounds, and open space within the city of Wheat Ridge. The Parks and Recreation Commission recommended to the city council that a new park will be implemented to disallow smoking in all parks, playgrounds, and open space within the city of Wheat Ridge, and that this rule policy be adopted by resolution. The rule is not intended to be formally enforced or added to the Code of Laws. Is a motion in order?
Motion's in order.
I move to approve resolution number oh-three two thousand and thirteen, a resolution approving a smoke-free policy in all parks, playgrounds, and open space within the city of Wheat Ridge.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion to approve item number six, that was seconded by Ms. Langworthy. Discussion? Please poll the council.
Motion carries seven-zero.
Thank you. Item seven, Councilmember Davis?
Oh, see now, I'm in a... All right. Motion to award RFQ-JN dash twelve dash thirty-five to DHM Design of Denver, Colorado, in the amount of eighty-nine thousand dollars, seven, eighty-nine thousand, seven-hundred and thirty dollars. Time to go home. For the purpose of preparing the design and construction documents for the park at Forty-Fourth and Kendall. Issue: The need for a neighborhood park in Council District Two was documented in the Parks and Recreation Master Plan of nineteen ninety-two, and again identified as an underserved area in the adopted two thousand and six Parks and Recreation Master Plan. Land parcels were purchased and land banked in nineteen ninety-eight and two thousand and two, respectively, for the purpose of developing a park in this area to meet this need, as outlined in the master plan. This site is located on the north side of Forty-Fourth Avenue at approximately Kendall Street. The scope of this contract includes design development, preparation of construction documents, bidding and bid analysis services. This contract award includes the services to the following vendors: DHM Design, JR Engineering, Civil Engineering and Survey Services; SAN Engineering, Structural Engineering; JCAA Electrical Engineering; IDC Irrigation Consultants; Ground Engineering Consultants, Geotechnical, and Soil Testing. And that's it. Is there a motion in order?
Motion's in order.
I move to award RFQ-JN dash twelve dash thirty-five to DHM Design, Denver, Colorado, in the amount of eighty-nine thousand, seven-hundred and thirty dollars for the purpose of preparing the design and construction documents for the park at Forty-Fourth and Kendall.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion to approve item number seven, that was seconded by Ms. Jay? I'm sorry, yeah. Item number seven, it was seconded by Ms. Jay. Any discussion on that? Mr. Stites?
Yeah, I would just like to say that I think this money would be better spent in District Three, but I'll support this.
Is that an amendment?
Okay, I would like to say that this is a great expenditure of money in District Two.
Okay, please poll the council on item seven.
Motion carries seven-zero.
Thank you. Item eight, Councilmember Jay?
Item eight, a motion approving payment in the amount of two-hundred-and-fifteen thousand, five-hundred dollars to Wheat Ridge twenty-twenty for the purpose of funding a revolving loan program for the building up business and home improvement loan programs and other community and economic development programs. At issue, request from Wheat Ridge twenty-twenty for the city's annual contribution to the revolving loan program for the build-up business and home improvement loan program and other community and economic development programs. Motion in order?
Motion's in order.
I have to find it. Here we go. I move to approve payment in the amount of two-hundred-and-fifteen thousand, five-hundred dollars to Wheat Ridge twenty-twenty with the purpose of funding a revolving loan program for the building up business and home improvement loan programs and other community and economic development programs.
Second.
We have a motion to approve item number eight for Wheat Ridge twenty-twenty, was seconded by Mr. Reinhardt. Discussion on item eight? Please poll the council. Please poll the council.
Motion carries seven-zero.
Thank you. Item nine is, um, discussion about term limits for boards and commission members. Mr. Pond?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Motion to direct staff to draft an ordinance setting term limits for board and commission members. At the November nineteenth, two thousand and twelve study session, council decided to discuss term limits for board and commission members at the December seventeenth study session. A consensus was reached at that meeting to hold this discussion during the regular meeting on January fourteenth, two thousand and thirteen. Is there a staff report?
Yes, um, City Clerk Shaver and our Deputy Clerk Rome are gonna make a present- quick presentation on this.
Yes, um, since the... Can you hear me? Since the, um, boards, the, the technical piece of the filling of the boards and commissions comes under the clerk's office, I thought I would weigh in a little bit, and, um, not only as clerk, but some experience on city council as well. But, um, I wanted to remind you that we already have term limits. It's called elections. And, um, when new people are elected to council, they can and very often do replace board and commission members. It's not like there's no way to infuse new ideas and fresh energy into the boards. Additionally, in Wheat Ridge, we have a situation where sometimes it's very hard to find people to serve on boards and commissions, and it's not always the same district, and it's not always the same board in the same given set of years. But it would be a bad idea to enforce term limits because in some cases, when you have somebody that's willing to serve in a case like that, you want to hold on to them for dear life and be very thankful that they're serving. The... This issue of a problem of not being able to find people to serve became such a problem at one point that some previous council, and I don't really remember when it was, they created the allowance for people to serve out of district so that we could actually have full boards. And in some cases, I think there was a time when the Board of Adjustments couldn't even have a, didn't even have a quorum because they didn't have enough people to fill. So they let people serve from out of district. I had a very brief but pointed discussion with, um, the city clerk in Golden this morning. They don't have term limits for some of the same reasons that we don't. And, um, I wanted to remind council about the institutional memory that some of these longtime servers provide. They often have more memory about things than the council people, and the clerk in Golden reminded me that sometimes they have more memory than even the staff does. And I think the staff would agree to that, that there's times when even newer staff people don't remember things that the old timers, if you want to call them that, uh, do. And I think it would be really unwise to force these dedicated volunteers to, that have all this knowledge, to, kick them out of service just for the sake of change for sa- change's sake. And, um, I would just encourage you to not try to reinvent the wheel. The wheel is the way it is in Wheat Ridge for a reason. And other people have thought about this. Term limits have been around a while, and nobody has ever done anything about it, and there's, there's a reason for it. And I'll, I'll stop, and the, our new, uh, certified municipal clerk, Bruce, the deputy clerk, he's put together a, a good, uh, PowerPoint presentation that has some really good information for you.
Thank you. Okay, what I want to provide to you is just some pretty straightforward, hard numbers. Uh, my role in boards and commissions is to get them filled every year, as you're all aware, as I email you when there's resignations and the like, so... As I was going through the history of boards and commissions for the city of Wheat Ridge, I came across some interesting numbers. I thought I'd, like I say, put them here in front of you, so... This was provided in your packet. I took out the part, originally it also included the Housing Authority in that. We determined that didn't matter. We have added two agencies because Golden and Lakewood did call. And what that basically breaks down to is, we talked to, that should, I'm sorry, that should read fifteen towns, no, sixteen. Eight of them have term limits. Four of those, theirs are two terms maximum, so they're either letting people serve six to eight years. One, uh, three terms, that could be six to fifteen years, depending on their board. And then two of them just said a flat twelve-year limit. I do want to point out that, for what it's worth, those were cities, Arvada, Aurora, sometimes larger cities, larger population. Now, this, this is a little hard to read, but I'll break it down, um, and make it real easy here in a minute, but what did I did? I went through, we've had eight hundred people serve on our boards and commissions since we started. And so I went through and looked at our documents, starting, uh, to see if they served less than a year, all the way up through thirty-six years. And when you break it down right here, as you can see, those serving less than one year to six years, that was six hundred and seventy-nine of them, and then seven to twelve was another eighty. So the large majority, um, it seems like, I guess you could say, self-imposed term limits, you know, they put in six to twelve years, they were proud of their work and moved on. And it just, it felt like a good number I should put in front of you. This was provided for you right now, where we're standing. And it actually went up a little more on the vacancies because we had another cultural commission member resign. So again, breaking that down, there you go. Currently, we have thirty-three, and that's zero to three years, twenty-two, four to six, and so on, out of eighty-one total members, uh, as it sits today. And we are also in the process of renewing, uh, those boards, and I've only received back of... I've received five of fifteen back so far, and they have until February first to express interest if they want to serve again. So again, like, very black and white, make your own conclusions from that, but I thought it would be worth all of you seeing, and I'm here if you have any other questions for me.
Thank you. Interesting data. Uh, Mr. Pond?
Mr. Mayor, do I need to make a motion, or can I just start, start a discussion at this point?
No, discussion's fine. You know, this is one of our new ideas, that we're gonna discuss some of this on the dais, uh, on TV, in front of the public, so... That's why a motion wasn't made at first, so feel free to interject, comment, make your point.
Alright. Well, I guess I just, I, first of all, thank you both to Janelle and especially Bruce for putting this uh, information together, and it is very, very revealing. You know, for me, the reason to talk about it honestly is just to kind of make sure that we're thinking about a principle of rotation and, and, you know, the idea that we are allowing for people to get involved in the business of our community, um, and that we're not excluding anyone. I don't believe that that, um, dismisses anything, that Ms. Mrs. Shavers is indicating in terms of, of, um, you know, people who are serving, people who have institutional knowledge, historical knowledge, that's very important. I don't know that, that I think it's change for change's sake. I think it's about really thinking, you know, about how we're letting people serve, and if we have a hard, if, if it's hard for people to, to serve, if we have a hard time finding people to serve, that's, I believe that's our job, or at least I believe that that's my job, to, to go out and make sure that there's people who are, who are, um, you know, having an opportunity to, to serve. I certainly get those calls. In looking at this, um, and thinking about it a little bit, because I think the numbers in the packet were informative, you know, I don't know that I would probably re- recommend anything other than perhaps, you know, a twelve-year, um, term limit that was indicated in a couple of communities. And I think, in our case, that allows for four, four terms served on a, on a three-year cycle, which is quite long, and, and, um, you know, I, I think it still covers ninety percent of the people who have served, um, historically, based on Bruce's number. And, and I think, at the same time, allows for us to kind of adhere to some principle of rotation where we're trying to get some new people in. So, you know, I, before I make a motion, I guess I just want to, you know, hear how people are feeling about it.
Comments? Mr. Reinhardt?
I guess I wound up, after looking at the data, in the sort of, it's not broke, don't fix it place, and would agree with the city clerk. But that, there's just not an, I don't see the need, myself, to do anything. So I agree with Ms. Shaver.
Ms. Davis?
I, I mirror a bit what, um, or mostly what, uh, Mr. Pond had said as far as, uh, some of our neighboring communities in the twelve-year. And it does look like the majority actually would fall within that. I guess the only question that I would have is, um, if we did set up something with term limits, and, and again, it, it looks as if it happens naturally in most cases, based on the numbers, and thank you again for the numbers. But if there was a situation, could we write in to the term limit, limit language that if there is not someone to fill the vacancy, that the candidate could continue on? So, does that make sense?
Sure, and, and you have almost that now. Uh, we'd have to amend the Code two-dash-fifty-three-C a little bit. You might recall, we amended that, or the council amended that, to, to provide if there was not an eligible candidate from within a district, that you could go outside. And so we would, the fix would be to add additional language that...
For term limits?
You know, that takes into account that concept and allow that as an additional exception.
Okay.
It's easy to do.
Any other comments, suggestions? Mr. Stites?
You know, over time, and, and watching Wheat Ridge, you gotta figure, what, thirty-two thousand people? Uh, we found out we're forty-seven percent rentals, so you don't get, you know, a lot of people that way. We have always had, since I've been on council, a tough time getting people to apply. And it's, I think it's gonna get worse, uh, because people just don't take the interest to do it. Yes, it is our job, uh, like George says, but still, it's extremely, extremely tough. And I, I kind of find it embarrassing that we would, uh, term limit any of our, uh, people, uh, that want to serve. I think your term limits would be if they don't get, uh, if they don't want to be reappointed, or you don't want to reappoint them. But I don't think you have to have language that you're gonna, uh, term limit somebody for, your whole purpose is trying to get people involved and do things, and, and you may get a good one. You never know that, you know, uh, my brother-in-law, for instance, has been on, I think, liquor years, and if you term limit him, God help you, because I'm not gonna stand there when you tell him, I'm not gonna do it. And then you got another problem too, with, uh, council, and I bring this up somewhat tongue-in-cheek, but then again, too, you gotta remember that we're on three months now that we haven't even ratified the appointment, uh, the mayoral appointment to the Housing Authority. So that's another problem that you got too, so, um, I really, I, I think, I somewhat think this discussion tonight is a little embarrassing, but I would be against term limits.
Any other questions or comments before Mr. Pond makes a motion? Mr. Demott?
I would say generally, I'm, I would be against term limits for all the same reasons. I, um, you know, in our district, we have, you know, we have borrowed, right now, we have borrowed people from other districts on our, on our district to represent us, and, and we have three vacancies that we are really having a hard time filling. So I think, I think this would be a good time to maybe ask and remind people that we do need people in District Four. And I saw something, but now I can't find it. What, what we need, what we have vacancies in, um, boards and, uh... The one that just came up, Cultural Commission, two, but two, we have no, no representation in Cultural Commission, and we have... I can't even remember. Parks. Yeah.
Parks in, in one, as I recall.
One of your liquor people is, uh, out of...
Oh, yeah, one of our liquor people is from District... Two, where is he? Two. So I, I would generally be against it. It sort of turns itself out, and I think it's working, you know, it may work to our, it may, may be a disadvantage, you know, in the future, and we may have to change it back.
Ms. Jay?
I, I agree that it's, um, I, I have thought that term limits were, were a good idea, but I, as I'm listening to the commentary and, and, um, our, our city clerk's comments, uh, as well, it is embarrassing to say, "Thank you, volunteers," but we're, we're chopping you off. When I look at that, there's only eight, thirteen over, that's, mm, is that ten percent? That's not that many people who are over the edge, and, uh, and, you know, obviously, they've given good service, and I, and I appreciate the work they've done.
Ms. Langworthy?
Thank you, George. I, I mean, Kevin, you, this is, you know, you, this is your second year, and so having sat through many a years where we don't have someone in that spot, it's really challenging. And, and to me, anything that, that creates a barrier to having people volunteer, it, it just creates a barrier for us. We have a hard enough time getting people to, to represent us, and District Four is a more challenging district than some of the other ones. That, that they generally do tend to, you know, by ten years, eleven years, they're probably kind of done. And so they're just gonna, attrition just is gonna happen. The ones that are, I mean, my understanding, what I know for sure, some of those ones that are the thirteen years, uh, they're in positions that are even more challenging, like, um, I know Janelle. Janelle's, you've been on for more than twelve years, right, for the, the, your board?
Oh, the...
Like, aren't you on?
The, the Jefferson County Community Corrections Board, that's not a...
That's not through us?
It's not a city board, it's a, an appointment.
So if this went into effect, it wouldn't impact you?
That's up to you.
It would? No, okay. As I was, I mean, because I wouldn't want your job.
Mr. Pond, I think a motion's in order?
Thank you. If I could, just before, thank you for the discussion. I, I appreciate it, and Bruce, uh, again, thank you for the work, very good work. I move not to direct staff to draft an ordinance setting term limits for board and commission members for the following reasons. There is not a compelling need for term limits at this time.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion not to move forward with term limits for boards and commission members, was seconded by Ms. Langworthy, Mr. Demott. Questions, comments? Please poll the council.
Uh, motion carries seven-zero.
Thank you. Item ten is the Housing Authority appointment. Ms. Davis?
I turn on my mic. Okay, speaking of boards and commissions and housing authorities, we actually have three applicants, so, um, this is a good thing. Motion to ratify mayoral appointment of Zachary Urban to the Housing Authority representing District Two, term to expire March second, two thousand and fourteen. Uh, the mou- the members of the Housing Authority are appointed by the mayoral ratification by city council. Katie Vanderveen has served on the Housing Authority representing District Two since two thousand and nine. Ms. Vanderveen has moved out of the city of Wheat Ridge and therefore had to resign. The current term that she vacated expires March second, two thousand and fourteen. Uh, as I said, three applications were received for the vacant position. The applicants are Zachary Urban, Kim Calamino, and Jadell J Gardner-Williams, all of District Two. And I will say, uh, all very strong applicants, and while all applicants have housing experience, Mr. Urban has not had the opportunity to serve on a board and has extensive experience in the housing market, and Mayor DeTulio is recommending that he be appointed to the Housing Authority representing District Two.
Motion's in order.
I move to ratify the mayoral appointment of Zachary Urban to the Housing Authority representing District Two, term to expire March second, two thousand and fourteen.
Second.
We have a motion to ratify Zach Urban, it was seconded by Mr. Stites. Discussion? Ms. Jay?
As a participant in the, in the process of ratification, I must take the undesirable route of voting in the nay to this appointment before us because the city is fortunate enough to have another highly qualified candidate, Kim Calamino. Kim is, was a founding member of Wheat Ridge twenty-twenty. Calamino is enabled, Neighborhood Stabilization of City Housing, which involves purchasing, refurbishing, and reselling homes to raise the standards of our neighborhood. Previously a builder herself, she brings her entire career of work with builders, construction methodology, plus the ability to understand and negotiate government regulation. plus the ability to understand and negotiate government regulations. I feel fortunate to have a candidate of this caliber whose integrity is as deep as our city's own roots.
Please poll the council.
Motion carries four to three, with council members Langworthy, Jay, and Reinhardt voting no.
Thank you. Item eleven is the ratification of Urban Renewals appointments. And before I hand it over to Ms. Davis, I was still in the stage of talking to candidates when this came forward through the process. And we have actually five great candidates who applied, some reapplied after they had decided not to reapply. But at this time, based on my conversations with everybody, I'd like to recommend Shane Nicholson and Walt Pettit. So, Ms. Davis?
Okay. Motion to ratify mayoral appointments to renewal Wheat Ridge. The members of renewal Wheat Ridge are appointed by the mayor and ratified by city council. There currently are two members whose five-year terms expired November thirtieth, twenty twelve, Walt Pettit and Rick Adams. Walt Pettit has served on Wheat Ridge Urban Renewal, or Renewal Wheat Ridge as an at-large representative since two thousand and seven. Mr. Pettit has applied seeking reappointment for another five-year term as an at-large representative. And Mayor, Mayor DeTulio has approved reappointing him to renewal Wheat Ridge. Rick Adams has served on renewal Wheat Ridge as an at-large representative since two thousand and seven and had initially chosen not to seek reappointment. The vacant position was advertised on Channel Eight and city of Wheat Ridge website. Three applications were received from Shane Nicholson, John Marriott, and Jennifer Walter. On January third, twenty thirteen, Rick Adams decided to seek another term with renewal Wheat Ridge. Mayor DeTulio is reviewing the applications for his choice of appointment to be announced during the January fourteenth. And so, you've done so. Is this, can we have discussion here, or should we wait till?
Well, I think,
A motion?
Motion's in order.
Okay. Okay. A motion in order?
You do both of them at once.
Okay. I, I would just like to say, I think we are very fortunate in the last, actually, two appointments that we have not experienced the situation where we're, we're seeking and borrowing from districts and that type of thing. And in all cases, we have had great applicants, and I want to thank those applicants for, for applying to these committees and, and make sure that we extend the fact that there are some other boards and commissions that are positions available. Is a motion in order?
Motion's in order.
I move to ratify the at-large mayoral appointment of Walt Pettit, term to expire November thirtieth, twenty seventeen. And I move to ratify the at-large mayoral appointment of Shane Nicholson to renewal Wheat Ridge, term to expire November thirtieth, twenty seventeen.
Second.
Motion to approve Shane Nicholson and Walt Pettit, it was seconded by Mr. Reinhardt. Discussion? Please poll the council.
Motion carries seven, zero.
Thank you. That concludes our agenda.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few updates on some development and redevelopment around our community. It's pretty exciting to talk about. King Supers on Thirty-Eighth and Sheridan has pulled their, their permits in the last couple of days to start their remodel. Their, again, of their store on Thirty-Eighth and Sheridan, and they are planning a, close to a six million dollar remodel of that store. So, hopefully, we'll be seeing that in the next few months. They should get started soon. I don't know the exact completion date. We're also continuing to see quite a bit of business interest across the city, which is pretty exciting. We've been speaking about the, the new brew pub, that's going to go in on Thirty-Eighth Avenue, Colorado Plus. They are still moving forward, and, and things look like they are working out for them. They'll have over fifty-two different Colorado beers on tap. Four of them will be their own. And a good food menu, so excited about that. Tommy Slalom, who is currently located at Thirty-Eighth and Sheridan in Denver, is also relocating into Wheat Ridge. They are retailer of water sport boats and jet skis and such, so we welcome them into Wheat Ridge. They'll be on Forty, Forty-third Avenue. And new restaurants, Taste of Home Cooking is moving from Arvada into Wheat Ridge, hopefully soon, at the old Mercedes Restaurant on Kipling. So, those are just three new business interests that we have in the city. So, thank you.
Thank you. City Attorney's Matters?
Nothing tonight, thanks.
City Clerk's Matters?
I just want to, he, he left, but I just wanted to thank Bruce. He, he's a, he's a whiz at the computer, and he loves crunching numbers and data and making charts and things. And, and sometimes it's kind of boring, or you think it's, you're not going to learn anything from it. It's just the exercise of putting the information together that's the reward. And I think in this particular case, I was surprised. I think probably everybody was, of how the, the length of service of all those various boards and commission people historically, and then also currently, it really was kind of an eye-opener, and it makes a decision easier. And he just does a good job, so I wanted to publicly thank him. Maybe he'll hear it on the tape.
Thank you. Mr. Pond?
Well, thank you. And first of all, I'd like to thank everyone for having a discussion on the dais about, about that, that topic. And hopefully, you know, I, I will stand by my, my pledge at least, to try to encourage people to get involved in our community. And, and, you know, and hopefully, we can all be a resource for people getting involved and, and doing more for our community. It's great, you know, obviously, to see, like, like Ms. Davis said, all of the applicants we had for our recent position. So, I hope we continue to see that. And I guess, going back to the beginning of the meeting, I just want to remind everyone for those Live Local Harvest movie series, January thirtieth, February twenty-seventh, March twenty-seventh.
Ms. Jay?
We're debating who gets to do something here. No, Tracy, I'll let you do it. She's going to do a Live Local. I think it's great that we're having more discussion on the dais, and, and so that our people at home can understand how we make these decisions, and that they're also going to be privy to us on study session. So, I'm just really excited about that.
Mr. Reinhardt?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Mr. Demott?
Thank you. I just wanted to thank the Rotary for their contribution tonight and their hard work all the time in the city. They seem to be around every corner that you, that you need something. They seem to be there to help. I also wanted to thank our deputy city clerk room for all their, his work tonight, and also congratulate him on his certification. And I did enjoy the new, discussing this on the dais with the term limits. I think it was a good, open and, and meaningful debate and conversation. Thanks.
Thanks. Ms. Davis?
Just real quick, I'd mirror as far as congratulations to Bruce and, and, and thanks for his work. And I do think the discussions on the dais is helpful. And I think even with the term limits, the data really showed that there wasn't as much a need for term limits as, as one might have expected. So, it was helpful data, and it was good for us to show the community and the folks watching how we came up with our decisions. I also want to make sure that, you know, we, there were questions as far as the process, on the application process with the, the last two appointments. And, and I do think that in, in many respects, there was some system glitches that, that we found and were able to improve on. And as a council, there, the applications were discussed at study, study session, study session, which made the process a little bit more open and transparent, so that helped as well.
Thanks. Ms. Langworthy?
Yes, I have a couple of items. First one is the Meet the Artist event will be this Thursday, January the seventeenth, from five-thirty to seven PM, at Home Instead Senior Care at sixty-one ninety-one West Forty-fourth Avenue. This is an effort by the Wheat Ridge Cultural Commission to connect residents, businesses, and our community here. There will be light refreshment, so if you would like to learn more about Katie Hoffman, who is our featured artist in January. And then also, our next Live Local event is going to take place at Clancy's, which is from five to seven PM. And they are at Thirty-Eighth and Kipling. Good Irish food in a pub. And I also like to thank Bruce, because he, he is very helpful when you have a question, and he really does give you the information you need. And it's good to see that we have employees who, who go above and beyond what their job is required and really get the education to be, to do the job well.
Thank you. Mr. Stites?
Oh, yeah. I got to do my spiel here. It'd be a great time to relocate your home or business to Wheat Ridge. If you need any help, check with one of us or staff. The positive thing this time, you know, I saw something today that really bothered me, and it was some kids walking down Thirty-Eighth after school, had no coat. In fact, they just had a small T-shirt. And I don't think it was the fact that they forgot their coat. I don't think they had a coat. And it really kind of bothered me that, so you might check in your neighborhood and see if some kid's walking by without a coat. And if you got an old one or whatever, hell, go out and buy them a new one. I don't care. But, you know, there's a couple of things in life I hate to see, and that's kids going without food and kids going without clothing. So, check your neighborhood and check your neighbors and make sure that they do have clothing for the cold weather. And as always, please try to find it and buy it in Wheat Ridge. Thank you.
Thank you. I just had a few quick things. I wanted to congratulate Bruce for his training and certification. Bruce took over after thirty-plus years of a previous deputy clerk, so he had some big shoes to fill, and he's made that effort. And I was pleased to see him tonight with his family, because his family's had some issues in the past, health issues. So, great for him and his family to be here tonight, and also to get the award, and gave us some, gave council some good data on boards and commissions. I also wanted to congratulate Zach Urban, Walt Pettit, and Shane Nicholson. They'll be hitting the ground running. You know, hopefully, the Housing Authority this year will really gear up, since they have some funding from the CDPG, and they'll be actually purchasing more properties that are for sale, that are rental properties, converting them to homeownership. And Zach's experience on the Adams County Housing Authority with Dora, I think will help with, hopefully, securing additional funding for that group. And then Shane Nicholson, he also has a business in Wheat Ridge and runs from his house. So, with those folks, with Walt Pettit being with the experience, I think that's going to be great for the Urban Renewal Authority. Their phase two is looking at another building at Forty-fourth and Uppam. Let's see. I wanted to thank the Rotary. You know, they kicked in fifteen thousand dollars last year, and the city supplemented that. And now they're paying it back for the mayor's art at the Discovery Park, and also for the dog park. So, they're back on that track of paying the city back. Every year, they gave back three thousand dollars. So, thanks to the Rotary for all they do within the city of Wheat Ridge, and they have a great group. And this Saturday, we had the Metro Mayor's Caucus Annual Retreat in Wheat Ridge. We had thirty-eight mayors from the metro area. Mayor Hancock was here also, who's an acquaintance of mine. And Mr. Reinhardt showed up for a few minutes and talked to a few folks. So, we had a good, good meeting. It was thirty, you know, thirty-eight mayors at the rec center. You know, that rec center's thirteen years old and still shows really well. It looks like brand new. So, the people of the Weaver should be really proud of that rec center, that we could have that kind of a showing, since we're centrally located, but looked great. We had CDOT was there, CML, and a few other types of organizations. So, it was, it was good to show off Wheat Ridge a little bit, and we got a lot of compliments on the rec center. And some have been there for weddings and different events, but it was a good turnout. So, with that, I believe, we're adjourned.